Prop 63, a measure that provides help for the homeless mentally ill and use those funds to build permanent supportive housing. The measure will also help create shorter-term housing for the homeless.
For a homeless person living without shelter, the key to a home could very well open a future that holds hope for restored health, restored mental health, and is successful bringing them back into society.
This is the boldest proposal to reduce homelessness in a generation.
The Star Apartments in L.A.'s Skid Row are one example of the type of supportive housing state and local leaders want to see more of.
A couple of things are important about what we do. It's called permanent supportive housing, and that is that it works and it saves money.
We are going to end homelessness and do it in a manner that will provide for sufficient mental health supportive services.
California is known as the homeless capital of the country with about 114,000 homeless, many of them living on L.A. streets. Legislators hope the new plan helps change those statistics. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The Prop 63 funds will help create a $2 billion bond to build the supportive housing. While the rains could be especially deadly for homeless campers near the L.A. River and other waterways, recently, city workers visited those areas urging people to move out. And as Gil Reyes tells us, the city has also reached into its own general fund during the crisis.
Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti says it's never been done before in the city's history. L.A. reaching into its own primary funds for millions of dollars in emergency homeless relief.
We're trying to lead by example, even in a tough budget climate in which we still have to close a deficit this coming year, as we have for the last seven or eight. We said we cannot afford to wait, and we're going to put our money where our mouths are.
At the Lamp Homeless Agency in Skid Row, Mayor Eric Garcetti announced plans to dip into the city's general fund to spend nearly $12.5 million for emergency homeless aid. This winter's rains could be deadly, especially for men, women, and children living along the L.A. River, the Tungaw Wash, and the Arroyo Seco. Usually, the city would ask state and federal governments for such funding, but given the immediacy of the threat, the city cannot wait.
And I want to assure all of you on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council and the city family that we're working on it as urgently as we possibly can.
The bulk of the money will fund short-term rental subsidies to house 1,000 people. The rest will pay for more emergency shelter beds. City leaders say up to 6,000 beds could be made available this winter. Even so, that's just a fraction of the beds required to comfort all of the estimated 18,000 homeless people in L.A.
So today's action is just one example of that, one modest example of many more that must follow.
As of deadline time for this story, the city and county of Los Angeles were expected to release a more detailed joint plan to battle homelessness in the early part of this year. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Meantime, talks for more funding from the state and federal levels continue. While in addition to finding shelter for the homeless during El Nino, city and county leaders have also teamed up to bring even more help to the mentally ill on Skid Row. Anna Marcos has more.
Mentally ill residents in L.A.'s homeless community are about to get a little TLC in their contacts with the law. The city and county plan to double the number of LAPD smart teams on the street, system-wide mental assessment response units.
It'll be a better place out on Skid Row.
The smart teams bring services, bring compassion, bring expertise, and can not only get people out of mental health crisis, but can get them off the street.
The smart teams pair up an LAPD officer with a county mental health worker. The teams can often de-escalate dangerous situations when police confront the mentally ill on Skid Row.
These teams save lives, they transform lives, and they have been critical to our work, but we've always never had enough.
Except if I'm a mental health person. I may not show it all the time, some days I'll be off my meds, but what if one day I don't have, you know, my meds in my system and I'm just going crazy? I would want you to approach me with guns or loudness or you see what I'm saying? That's gonna make me more afraid.
And you're hearing voices, it's very confusing to you. You're being told to do things, you're not exactly sure why some of them seem bad things, and all of a sudden, someone yells at you, "Stop!" Right? Might you not run faster? Your response to someone reaching out is to move your arm like that. And when you do that, right now, you've assaulted a police officer.
City leaders estimate about a third of all homeless people on the streets have mental health problems, so having more officers trained in mental health is critical.
Oftentimes, what happens, that instead of these individuals getting the care, they're put in jail, they put in the criminal justice system, and that leads them to a cycle of continued despair.
But smart teams are only the first line of defense. Advocates say the mentally ill homeless need supportive housing after their smart team interventions, places like the Star Apartments. Here, residents get art therapy through a mosaic building. They can even get job training and become artisans who are paid for their work.
It provides work and a place to sell art. I just really enjoy making it.
We're one of the supportive services that provide the much-needed opportunity to connect, and we do that through creativity, to connect and contribute to society.
But the first step, beefing up the smart teams, will put more help on the street for those who can't always help themselves. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The smart teams will be on the streets seven days a week. While shooting massacres in France and San Bernardino have left many of us feeling vulnerable, as Gil Reyes reports, city leaders hope anti-terror training will boost people's confidence in local emergency response.
In the aftermath of the recent terrorist attacks in Paris that claimed the lives of 130 victims, L.A.'s first responders get organized.
In this new world, it may not just be one shooting incident in one place, but multiple incidents in multiple places simultaneously. How quick can we muster? How quickly can we be ready? And how strongly can we respond? Very proud of the response here today.
Mayor Eric Garcetti referring to the 400 law enforcement and fire personnel taking part in anti-terrorism training at Dodger Stadium. Without giving away too many secrets, we can say the half-day exercise served two purposes: training between numerous agencies for faster coordinated response, and to send a message through the media that the city is as prepared as it can be.
We are one of the top terrorist targets, and there is no reason for me to think that we will be spared. And that's one of the reasons why we train so hard and practice so thoroughly, is to make sure that when that day comes, and I still hope it never comes, that we will be ready.
Recent shootings in Paris and in San Bernardino have left much of our region understandably scared. City leaders urge people to be vigilant in reporting suspicious activity, but at the same time, be accepting of other people's religions and cultures. In fact, it's those good relations between communities that can help the public and law enforcement identify terrorists before they strike.
And to stand as Christians, Jews, Muslims, Buddhists, Hindus together and say that we are one city. We join hands to declare in one voice that we would stand up to the threat of terror, and terror speaks for no religion. It is something that is godless.
In Elysian Park, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
LAPD SWAT officers, sheriff's deputies, and city fire personnel took part in the exercises. While a major milestone for the L.A. port, charges are filed against several Boyle Heights businesses, and North Hollywood residents helped to beautify their neighborhood. All these stories in City B. The largest container ship ever to dock at a North American port arrived at the Port of Los Angeles recently. French shipping line CMA CGM launched the CMA CGM Benjamin Franklin in December. The ship has a capacity of nearly 18,020-foot equivalent units, which is about a third larger than the biggest container ships that currently call at the San Pedro Bay port. The ship is longer than the Empire State Building and wider than an Olympic-sized swimming pool.
When I look up at this ship, I don't just see a 20-story building. I see a reminder of what is possible.
City attorney Mike Fuer, in collaboration with the California Environmental Protection Agency and other regulators, announced that his office has filed criminal charges against five metal plating businesses in Boyle Heights for various alleged environmental violations that pose a threat to public health and safety. The action resulted from an ongoing environmental justice compliance and enforcement initiative, a first of its kind in Los Angeles, to investigate polluters in underserved communities. Future operations are planned in Pacoima.
We allegedly found metal dust, dust containing carcinogens that if it were airborne, would jeopardize the respiratory health of people who live in and around the neighborhood in which the dust was found.
Los Angeles City Councilmember Paul Krikorian recently joined dozens of Cub Scouts, veterans, and neighborhood leaders in a tree planting project at North Hollywood Park. 100 new trees were planted in the community park, which recently lost a number of trees due to drought and disease. Officials say these new drought-tolerant trees will provide shade and create a more pleasant, useful, and sustainable green space for the community.
This really was an effort of neighbors, and young people, and veterans, and environmentalists, and others who really cared about improving the quality of life in North Hollywood and the environment.
For students in the 21st century, computer science is key to success in college and career. Rich Samuels looks at one school where computer science is front and center.
From across the city, from UCLA and from the Los Angeles Unified School District, educators and community leaders came to Foché Tech Academy to check out the innovative work of some talented seniors.
This is the third year of seniors for the Foché Tech Academy. They've been together for three years, and this is their showcase of all of their computer science work over the past three years. As their final project, they each took on an issue in the community and used technology to provide either awareness or a solution to the issue.
It's all part of the Hour of Code campaign, a worldwide effort to expand access to computer science and increasing participation by women and underrepresented students of color.
I learned different programming languages. I learned new life skills about marketing and about communication, and I've learned that it can be applied in everything that you do. So now, I plan on attending college and majoring in computer science.
The students tackle real-world problems from entirely new perspectives.
For example, one of the issues we have here on campus is social responsibility. So one of the groups created Foché Rewards, and they're trying to gamify school to get people to help each other and look out for each other, so hopefully it becomes a normal course of action.
But with engaged teachers and industry mentors, students are discovering the skills they've learned aren't just for their future.
You can make a difference right now. As a matter of fact, we need you to make a difference right now. As a matter of fact, we need you to lead right now.
From Foché Tech Academy in South Los Angeles, this is Rich Samuels for L.A. this week.
The Hour of Code event has introduced more than 100 million students worldwide to computer science. While you never get table service like this, Greater L.A.'s African-American Chamber of Commerce kicked off its inaugural celebrity waiter and waitress luncheon. Stars from every walk of life donated their services for a good cause. Anna Marcos has the story.
These aren't just run-of-the-mill waiters and waitresses. There are some big VIPs here, all taking part in the first-ever celebrity waiter and waitress luncheon. The fundraiser is put on by the Greater L.A. African-American Chamber of Commerce Education Fund and Foundation, or GLAC. Waiter and councilmember Corinne Price gets a welcome that would be the envy of any Hollywood A-list star.
This is an opportunity to support GLAC and its education fund. We're supporting young people, encouraging their educational pursuits.
The celebrity waitstaffers run the gamut, from Microsoft and Tinseltown executives to government leaders, lawyers, and doctors. There is even an L.A. police commissioner in the bunch. And guess what? You have to tip.
Mama taught us that if you can't afford to tip, you can't afford to eat.
And not just one tip either. After all, how many waiters do you know will pose for pictures, dance for customers, make small talk, and yes, even do real waitstaff work, like serving and pouring? How about a plate and a hug? Now that's TLC. And the more tips you can collect for each job, the better, because the cash doesn't go into these waiters' pockets, it goes into the pot to fund college educations for young African-American high school graduates.
There's a red jar, a red box, on your table. You don't have to hand your waiters any money or anything. You drop it right there in that box.
I might have to go back to my day job, yes, but I'm learning on the job.
Well, a little extra job experience can't hurt the resume. And with the money raised, you just might help a young person get started on a career. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
GLAC provides economic opportunities for underserved communities, and it has already raised close to a half a million dollars for inner-city students' education. While the L.A. Zoo welcomes its newest residents, a pair of Tasmanian devils who are there for show as well as conservation. Gil Reyes explains.
That is right, Yana. The arrival of these two Tasmanian devils brothers, by the way, is part of a larger effort to save the animals from extinction. Tasmanian devils, on the whole, suffering from a rare type of facial cancer. They arrive at the L.A. Zoo with the nastiest of reputations, but the truth about Tasmanian devils is that their bark, or rather, their growl is worse than their bite.
Contrary to belief, they are not the vicious creatures that people think they are.
You might have been expecting this: the snarling tough guy from Looney Tunes destroying everything in his path like a tornado. But Robin Parker, senior zoo animal keeper, says real Tasmanian devils are usually quite timid until provoked.
They can spin, but not quite like the cartoon character.
And why do they spin? What's that?
It's normally an aggressive behavior.
Though only the size of a small dog, Tasmanian devils are the largest marsupial carnivores in the world. They attack in groups, eat animals whole, and have terrifying, bone-chilling shrieks to go with those sharp teeth. The two brothers come to us from a wildlife sanctuary in Tasmania, Australia.
We hope people enjoy it. They are threatened and endangered in Australia, and we hope to be part of the solutions going forward in the future.
L.A. Zoo Director John Lewis says more than half of the population has been wiped out in recent years, mainly because of devil facial tumor disease, a parasitic cancer. The brothers, around three years old, are cancer-free. The long-term goal is to find the mates so they can help produce colonies of healthy offspring. They don't eat humans whole, do they?
I hope not.
Rodents, chunk meat, and rabbits mostly. At the L.A. Zoo, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The L.A. Zoo is one of only four zoos in the nation that have taken in the creatures. While 13th District Councilman Mitchell Farrell celebrated two years in office with a recommitment to community empowerment. Rich Samuels has more.
It seemed like everyone turned out for Councilman Mitchell Farrell's Family Resource Fair, held recently on the campus of Rosemont Elementary School. The fair wasn't just informative and empowering...
We're having fun.
We have about 18 agencies and nonprofits partnering with us today, and we're offering dental screenings, medical screenings, we're offering immigration services, as well as pony rides for the kids, hot dogs, free food, bounce houses for the kids, but also city services.
Those city services range from sanitation in the public library to homeless services, the LAPD, and the Fire Department.
We like being in the neighborhood and letting constituents know that we are here for them, and that there are a lot of agencies and nonprofits that exist to serve the public.
This is Rich Samuels for L.A. this week.
Councilman O'Farrell has made outreach a top priority, leading close to two dozen community walks throughout his district since he took office. While aspiring drummers go head-to-head, celebrating African-American films, and hiding your identity takes on a whole new look. All this in this week's Things to Do. The search for the top undiscovered drummer heats up during the Guitar Center's Drum Off Finals. After making it through the preliminary rounds, the top five undiscovered drummers will hit the stage at Club Nokia to compete for the Drum Off title. The Drum Off competition was developed to inspire and support drummers in the pursuit of their musical aspirations. Drum Off is committed to rewarding and recognizing talent by providing a launching pad for a professional career as a drummer. To compete, you need to sign up at a participating Guitar Center store. For more, visit drumoff.guitarcenter.com. The California African-American Museum celebrates African-American cinematic moments from the 1940s through an independent lens. Coloring Independently is an exhibition of more than 80 film stills and related photographs from the unique collection surrounding African-American films from the 1940s. The show features images of African-Americans in movies during a time of limited character roles and access to the mainstream movie industry. Seen typically in movies referred to as race films or movies, these independent productions were created with a black cast and for an African-American audience. Explore the distinct images and stories told more than 65 years ago as part of the broader African-American filmmaking tradition. The exhibit is on view now through February 29th. The African-American Museum is located at 600 State Drive in Exposition Park. For more, visit caamuseum.org. It's a dynamic exhibition that considers the past, present, and future of disguise, a visual act that can be a mask, a costume, or simply a camouflage. Disguise features exciting new works by 12 contemporary artists from Africa and of African descent who explore the impulse of disguise with optical illusions, street actions, computer magic, and virtual reality. Together, these works will engage visitors' imaginations as they consider the art of masking as a transformative process, one that is informed by a multiplicity of influences, from historical African masquerade traditions to contemporary global culture and digital media. It's on view now until March 13th at UCLA's Fowler Museum. For more, visit fowler.ucla.edu. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Good morning, good morning. Please take your seats. Today is Tuesday. Today is Tuesday, January 12th. I trust everyone had a happy new year, and we're wishing you a healthy and a prosperous one, or productive one. And it's good to be back in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corret, Correia, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves, Price seconds, next.
Communitar resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves, Corret seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now by the time for flag salute.
Okay, Mr. Corret, I'm going to ask you to lead us in the flag salute today. If all would please rise.
If you please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Corret. Let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue items 1D, 1M, 1P, 1AN, 1BA, and 1BD to January 26th.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Items 1 and 2 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that the following items may be received and filed. For items 1Z, AE, and AU, the liens have been paid. For items 1AO, the lien has been rescinded by the department. And for items 1U, 1AX, and AZ, the property is owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and exempt from lien processing.
Okay, so without objection, that'd be the order. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to continue for two weeks. 1AE, 1AF, 1AG, and 1AH.
Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Yes, Mr. President, those will be continued to January 26th.
Thank you.
Okay, so ordered. Okay, going back to 1 and 2.
Mr. President, there are cards on item 1, and there is a request to hold item 2 for an amended motion.
We'll do that. Let's move on to the next section.
Items 3 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, now, going back to 1 and 2. On 2, whoever has the amended, wants to amend that, please get that in soon. So now, we're, we're, items 3 through 17, specials, members, specials. I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Let's continue.
Items 18 through 27 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 18, 19, 24, 25, and 27.
Okay, let's hold those items, and let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Fuentes.
Item 1V, as in Victor, and X, if we could reconsider those, and if that passes, continue them for a month.
Okay, so we have not voted on those yet?
Wait.
Okay, so, Mr. Ofero?
President, please send item 24 back to Health Committee.
Without objection, so ordered. Where are we now, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, do you wish to vote on the remaining items?
Okay, that will do. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's continue, let's move on.
Item 28, on the supplemental agenda, item 28 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item's before us. Do you have cards?
No cards.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on it. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let us move to item, the next item, which is 29, I believe.
Yes, item 29 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold on the desk or take that at this time?
No, I believe we can move forward with that, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Correia.
Yes, Mr. President, Budget and Finance recommends approval. The city attorney's recommendations in that matter can be voted on. Oh, sorry. The recommendations of outside counsel, not the city attorney, but Budget and Finance recommends approval.
Okay, do we have cards?
All the hearing has been held.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Fourth with on item 29?
Excuse me, Mr. President, just for the record, the recommendation from the city attorney, and, the recommendation from outside counsel for the case entitled "Moralton Recovery Partners LLC versus CRA LA, City of Los Angeles et al," is to approve the settlement of the Los Angeles Superior Court case number BC527351 in its entirety.
Okay, so that brings us where?
And, Mr. President, I believe there's a request for this item to go urgent forth with. Counsel should vote on that.
Well, it's, okay, urgent forth with works for me. Let's vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. That brings us where?
That brings counsel to presentations or items called special.
Okay, we're going to go to item 27. Mr. Murphy, Sean, please come forward. Same to you.
Item 27 is maps, roadmaps. I am for this item. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Members, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the rolls, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And I do want to give a special thanks to outside counsel where it relates to item 29. You did a phenomenal job. Let's go now to item 18. Ms. Pierman, Donna Pierman, where are you? Ms. Pierman?
Okay, this is about the MOUs, about lasers. I just basically, I'm not sure exactly what this is for, so I would hope that you would be, this is something that would be good for the city employees. I would want you to make a fair way of dealing with them, since they work so hard, dealing with their health care and being something that they're satisfied with, so that I hope that the city employees are happy with this. And I don't know how much time I took, so be fair to them. That's all I say. Thank you.
Thank you. So let us, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we're going to move on now. Sean Murphy, we're doing item 19. Come forward.
Yes, item 19, I'm against.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. So let's, item 25, Ms. Pierman, Donna Pierman? Donna, come on now.
This proves, unfortunately, with the shooting death of Marcus Alexander, that we are not safe, that they can't keep us safe, and it's just basically, it's just a reward item, but by the way, Snitzer's gets stitches. Don Walsh is not here to say that yet, so, but he's true. Nobody is going to say that, bring this in, because they could get killed, or the family can get killed. As I was saying, that they can't keep us safe, and that's why we should be able to carry, because there's not going to be a police every time, and people are continuing going to be killed. So we should demand our Second Amendment rights, and so that we won't also be a victim. And I'm just going to keep this down to a minute, so 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Thank you.
Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
We'll do a little general public comment. Claudia, F. Claudia Boville, followed by Donna Pierman, followed by Sean. Please come forward.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I'm here to address the subject of carbon monoxide debt and explosion. I live at the Glory Homes apartment complex, and right now, there are issues in regards to the old-style heaters that they have. I have been given three notices already that those heaters are carbon monoxide, and they're ready to explode as far as a gas explosion. I faxed a letter to corporate office in November about that issue, debt, carbon monoxide, and they have ignored that letter that I faxed to them. At that complex, we have a lot of elderly people that live in the complex. They have no knowledge of what's going on, but the heaters have been declared by the gas company to be unsafe. Also noted that in 2012 and 2011, the city council was involved with Glory Homes in regards to some issues. These are the newspaper articles that I kept from 2011, 2012. So the reason I'm here was to let you know, and I would like to give Mr. Wesson a copy.
Thank you. Please give the articles to the clerk. Thank you, or to the sergeants, I apologize. Okay, Ms. Pierman, Donna, and Mr. Murphy, come on now. And Sean, you should be right on our heels.
Okay, thank you. We need to reopen Van Nuys Field Conference so we can allow those in the valley to speak. Now with the news that North Korea has working a hydro bomb, our country should have been ever so vigilant. Obama and the Democrat Party just laugh it off, and we're in big trouble with North Korea because we're the closest, so California be in, be careful. Anyway, they laugh it off, they think it's not important. Hillary Clinton would continue Obama's legacy of allowing evil to flourish by inactivity. We need to fight against those who worship death. We need to behead Abu Bakr Baghdadi, who was a coward allowing others to murder and die for him. We need to obliterate ISIS before they destroy the whole Western world and Israel. We can't accept the Syrians of refugees, mostly Islamic young males, easily being corrupted by ISIS. Syrians are costing $65,000 per person. Let's help them there. It's less costly, and this life disrupted their lives. We worship the God of life, they worship a God of death. Please vote Republican, any Republican.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Murphy, and I'm going to call up Michael Carrion to be the last public speaker just at this time. So go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I hope you had a nice holiday, Herv.
Thank you.
I'll be at the Kingdom Day Parade on Monday. I had a good time last year, you remember?
Yes, I do, and I'll look for you.
Yeah. I went to visit my old neighborhood where I grew up yesterday. The sidewalks are still cracked from 30 years ago when I grew up there, 40 years ago when I grew up there. I don't think they never, ever, ever fixed it. Mr. Rue's not here because he doesn't want to hear it.
Michael, or Mr. Carrion?
Once again, can I get the city council's attention? And if I don't get your attention, please do not come complaining next time you hear from me that I said something that upsets you because you weren't paying attention. Okay? I'm here to let Mr. Weezer know, I'm fed up. I've been waiting 10 years for the Soloslope to be worked on, and all I get is a bunch of BS, a bunch of garbage, a bunch of yes, yes, oh, no, Nancy Wax is not this, and the legal this, and legal that, BS. Okay? Fair warning today, Mr. Weezer, if this doesn't get done, and you don't get on the job, then get off. Leave office. Let somebody sit in that seat who's going to do something. You showed up when a kid got ran over all grieving, but when somebody gets hit on this street, you're going to say you knew nothing about it. I will be here every day that I can on public.
Thank you, thank you, Michael, your time's expired. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sadio, why don't we move to presentations? I'm told that you might be ready. And if that is the case, the floor is Mr. Weezer's. I mean, Mr. Sadio's. Hey, man, this is my first day back, Gilbert.
I understand. I do understand.
Are you ready? Why don't we go to Mr. Englander and Mr. Sadio? Get your group together, we'll call on you next. Mr. Englander?
Come on up. And bring your wife up. Yes, yes. Come on. Well, Mr. President, colleagues, I'm here to honor one of the best commanders that ever lived in Los Angeles Police Department. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here, so we're going to honor Andrew Smith instead. I know you guys did that. Oh, my God. Just a little, just a little inside Smith humor. Today, we honor Commander Andrew Smith for 27 years of service to the Los Angeles Police Department, 27 years to the Los Angeles Police Department. Commander Smith joined LAPD in June of 1988. During his distinguished career, he has worked assignments throughout the city of Los Angeles, including Wilshire, Newton, Pacific, Police Facilities Construction Group, 77th Street, Hollywood, and Operations West Bureau. We simply wanted to get rid of him before he came to the valley. We simply wanted to get rid of him before he came to the valley. While a police officer, he continued his education, earning a master's in public administration degree from, of course, USC, and always committed to bettering himself. Commander Smith also attended USC's Delinquency Control Institute, the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy, the Police Executive Research Forum Senior Management Institute for Police, and the Senior Seminar in Counterterrorism in Tel Aviv, Israel. Commander Smith has served as a commanding officer in Harbor Operations Support Division, Harbor Patrol Division, Communications Division, and of course, Central Division. He has served as a staff officer in Central Bureau Criminal Gang Homicide Group, South Bureau, West Bureau, and of course, Media Relations and Community Affairs. Andrew spent the last four years of his career as the commanding officer of Media Relations and Communications Group. In fact, his mother used to say that he has a face for radio. He served as the Public Information Officer and Chief Spokesperson for the department in all of the critical and high-profile events in the Los Angeles area between 2010 and 2015, including Occupy LA and of course, the donor incident. And if that weren't enough to add to his distinct, his distinguished career, Commander Smith has gone for more than two decades without a single sick day. On December 1st, 2015, he was selected from applicants from around the United States to be the Chief of Police for Green Bay, Wisconsin. So on behalf of a grateful city, we congratulate Andy on his successful career with the Los Angeles Police Department, wish him and his wife Susan and their children Connor and Catherine great success. We've put together a cheese basket from all of us, which you'll need. Uh, we didn't, we couldn't find the cheese hat, uh, but certainly a cheese basket for you as well, of course. And on a personal note, um, I remember the first day that I actually met Andy. And, um, I don't know if you remember this, that night, um, but, uh, this was many years ago, and I got a call from a friend of mine and said, "Tonight, we're having a boxing competition between LAPD and the sheriffs." The, uh, I forgot the name of what the annual.
Fight for Life.
Fight for Life. Uh, and we're, we're gonna go pick up a friend of mine, uh, who's gonna take us, we're gonna go with him. And of course, he pulls up, and, uh, I, I got home pretty late that night. I don't remember much from it, but I do remember, um, that when we walked in, every single, and this place was packed. I've never been to anything like this. It was an incredible event. Every single law enforcement officer, CHP was there, LAPD was there, of course, the Sheriff's Department was there, and the respect that they gave him, uh, that night that I saw, I've never seen that of anybody, quite frankly. Everybody there just appreciated the fact that he walked in the room, and this is years ago. And then you fast forward to all the things that we've seen him do to lead this department, to be the example of what it means to wear the badge, the honor and the dignity, the respect, and how difficult we know that job is today. We need examples and leaders like that within this department, within every department. And we have one, we've had one for 27 years that's really set the bar so high for so many, to work with at-risk youth, to mentor and monitor and watch and work with recruits and boots, to teach them what it means to lend a hand, to care for others. I've seen him work firsthand with the homeless population here in Los Angeles, and, you know, it's not about, uh, it was never about the badge, I think, from what I witnessed with him, or the cameras as the media relations, uh, and spokesperson for the department or this city. It was always about helping others, and you can see that, um, each and every day with what he brought. And so while you'll be missed, uh, Wisconsin definitely has a tremendous game. And, uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to our police chief as well to say a few words. Thank you so much.
Chief, welcome.
Well, first, I wanna, I wanna thank the city council for recognizing Andy. You know, Andy has, uh, as Councilman Englander said, has been a police officer for three decades, and I've known him for, for most of that time. A couple of things have, have always impressed me about Andy, and, and those are his humanity, his humor, and the way he speaks from the heart. You know, with, uh, one of the reasons that I selected Andy to be our PIO is because I knew that Andy had the kind of credibility, not only internally but externally, because he is the real deal. He's a real cop with a real heart who wants to make a difference in people's lives. And he has done that, you know, whether, uh, whether it was as, uh, as the captain in, in Central Division where, you know, he was tireless in his, in his outreach efforts, his, his efforts with, with the homeless. And, and with, with Andy, it isn't just about directing those that work for him, it's what he actually does. I mean, he is a, he is a boots-on-the-ground, uh, command officer who, who I have tremendous respect for. The councilman talked a little bit about two major events where Andy was on the, not only the, the local media stage, but the national and worldwide media stage. And one was during Occupy LA in Los Angeles, obviously. Andy walked Occupy, I think, every day. Some days I would walk with him, but he walked it every day. He made sure that people were being treated fairly, and that rules were being followed. He was one of the reasons, maybe the primary reason, that this city was the only city that had a successful resolution. During the Dorner crisis, unprecedented law enforcement crisis, where, where Andy was our spokesperson in front of national media, 40 cameras at a time, you know, for, for weeks. His humanity, his humor, his stability, all of that showed through. And I think that, that he has been a credit not only to the Los Angeles Police Department, but to this city. I think when people see Andy, they know that they're gonna get the truth, they're gonna get all the information that, that the police can put out, and they're gonna get somebody that cares about what he says. So Andy, you know, I, I am very sorry to see you go. You will never be completely replaced, uh, but I will introduce your replacement. But, but you will never be, you will never be duplicated. You know, we will always try to, uh, to, uh, instill your values into the people that do your job in the future, but, but they'll always be searching to, to, to meet the standard that you have set. With that, and most of you know Captain Andy Neiman, he will be the new PIO for the department. He worked with, with Commander Smith, and none of the bad habits rubbed off, all the good habits did. So he will be our, uh, new PIO in a, in a little different format that, that I'll talk about later in front of council. But I wanna thank the council for recognizing Andy Smith, and I wanna say that, that I will miss him, uh, not only professionally, but personally. And, uh, I hope to visit, well, I hope he comes back and visits us, 'cause I'm not going out there. But, anyway, thank you to the council.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Englander, I have a few members that are on the queue. I'd like to have them speak at this, this time. But what I do wanna say is, uh, Commander Chief-to-be, uh, you've always been an honorable man and a class act, and you never gained an ounce of weight. So we, you, you're a good skinny cop, and we're gonna, we're gonna miss you. And also, Mr. Englander, Mr. Englander did a wisecrack about two years without a sick day. I want you to call us two years from now after working in Green Bay, to see if you were able to, to keep that alive. So with that said, I'd like to defer to, uh, our senior lead officer, Joe Buscaglia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and thank you, Mr. for bringing Andy in. Is there any Parmesan cheese in that basket? I'm gonna make sure of that. But Commander Smith, um, this opportunity here to recognize, uh, your, your love and your commitment to the city and the police department, uh, we wanna thank you for your dedication, and you know, one of our core values in the police department is respect for people, and you embodied that. And it's evident with the, uh, people that served under your leadership who are present. You know, Sarah Faden's here as well, one of my partners who actually worked under you as well. Everyone just loved working for you. You were fair, you were consistent, you were honest, and, um, uh, my first, uh, meeting with you was, um, when I worked for the community policing unit, and we were trying to put together and build stronger relationships between teenagers in the police department. We put together the, uh, um, the LAPD fair in front of the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club. You were at the harbor area at the time, and we had this huge rock climbing wall. And, um, um, you strapped on, you went up that, uh, rock climb, you went up, you climbed that rock climbing wall with kids, and they loved you. And, and that's what, um, you showed. You showed the heart behind the badge throughout your career, uh, at all levels. So we, um, we thank you for your service, we're gonna miss you, and, um, you do, um, we always think about you when we see Fire Marshal Bill, if you've seen that skit. That was all you, Andy. But, um, you know, our loss is Green Bay's, Green Bay, um, is gained, so we're gonna miss you, and, uh, we love you, God bless you, you and your family, and, um, thank you for your service to this city and to this police department.
Mr. Sadio.
Andy, say it's not true. Like Mr. Englander, I recall quite vividly the first night we met. It was a Friday evening, I was living downtown, and I, um, uh, went for a run, got dressed, put my jeans on, put a t-shirt on, went over to, uh, eat at this place called Pete's, Pete's. And I sat outside, and I, I was introduced to you and, and, uh, your partner. And you and your partner were sitting there wearing some khakis and a Hawaiian shirt and a polo shirt, and we had a hamburger. I had no idea what you did, and we spent about two hours talking about homelessness, and about, uh, the challenges that we're confronting downtown at the time. And so we sat there, we just talked about, you know, what a better world would look like, and what were the things that could be done. Somewhere along the end of two hours, uh, you introduced yourself as being a member of the LAPD, and, uh, and it was from there that we put together a, a half a dozen proposals that ended up being a legislative package that we used at that time. In fact, one of the first enhancements, uh, to use against those who prey upon, uh, the homeless in downtown, uh, selling drugs. And so that was our first introduction. Uh, you've been a great friend since then. You are a consummate, uh, police officer, you're a consummate leader. Uh, you're a man of incredible influence, and, um, it really is Green Bay's gain, and we're gonna miss you, and I'm gonna miss you, you know, because you've been such a great friend, uh, since that first night I met you. So God bless and God sweet.
Mr. Englander?
I would, uh, the man who, uh, always has choice words, I'd like to call up our commanding officer, uh, our new chief of Green Bay, Andy Smith. Thank you very much. Well, thank you all very, very much for this recognition, and a little bit more of a roast than I was expecting, actually. Thank you, thank you. I think I was set, I think I was set up. I, it's interesting that Councilmember Sadio brought up Pete's Cafe, 'cause that's exactly where I met my wife Susan, about, uh, six or eight years ago. We, I don't remember exactly the day, uh, but we did meet at Pete's Cafe. I guess I hang.
Yeah, you're roasting yourself, man.
Yes. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you, and it's great to have the opportunity to address you, and I really appreciate, on behalf of the police department, all the support that you've given to not just me personally, but the police department itself over all these years. It's been wonderful working here in Los Angeles, from the day I started in 1988 as a recruit, and got to walk in the footprints in the different neighborhoods over in Wilshire Division and over in the Beverly Center, until my last day, which is the last days today I'll be wearing this, this particular blue uniform. Um, I'm switching, uh, by the way, Green Bay's blue uniforms are exactly the same color as these blue uniforms, so, um, they, they actually took, it's in their manual, that is LAPD blue, this is the LAPD blue color, and across the country, a lot of other agencies wear this exact uniform and this exact color. But I just wanted to say thanks, and I also wanna take a moment to thank the chief of police, Chief Charlie Beck, for his leadership, and especially for the leadership team that he's assembled. You know, he's assembled the top quality people on this department, and I think you should all know that you, you can rest comfortably at night, knowing that the Los Angeles Police Department is full of hard-working, constitutional, considerate, um, gentle, good people. And they're out there doing good work every night, and, and a lot of times, we don't get to see that, and these are tough times for police agencies across the country. But here in Los Angeles, you can rest assured, and I hope you sleep well at night, as I did, knowing that your communities are being policed and being cared for by an incredible group of men and women who are out there every day, uh, putting themselves at risk, um, on many different levels, but doing the right thing for the community for the right reason. So I hope you, uh, you can sleep a little bit more easily at night. As I moved to Green Bay, one of the biggest questions is why Green Bay, Wisconsin? I'm from back there, I don't know if I can still have a little bit of an accent, but I grew up about 100 miles north of Green Bay. And for a little kid growing up in a little town in Michigan, Green Bay was the big city. We get to go there twice a year and go grocery shopping and, and buy new clothes for school. And imagine coming to Los Angeles and being a part of this wonderful city here. So I just wanna say, on behalf of my wife Susan and I, who's been there with me for the past half of the, or half of it or so, um, it's been a wonderful experience, or so. I'll look up the dates when I get home, I'll get it all down.
You're digging a hole.
It's been really fantastic, it's been great working for, and it's been really an honor representing the Los Angeles Police Department, uh, in the media, and speaking to community groups, and representing the, the hard-working men and women, Chief Charlie Beck and the leadership team that you've assembled here. So on behalf of that, I will step off the stage and into, uh, the city of Green Bay, and I'll wish you all well, and I hope I see you at a Packers game, come and knock in the booth where I'm at, and you'll, and I'll take you down to the field, and we'll go say hi to Aaron Rodgers or something. Thank you all very much.
Good luck to you. Good luck to you.
I've got, I've got one more quick thing I need officially, come here. You just need to repeat after me. November 1st. 1st. 2007. 2007. Is the day that I met my wife. Is the day that I met my wife. I have it on my calendar, I know. Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations and good luck. Ms. Martinez, as they exit, you may want to walk towards the, uh, center aisle.
Good morning, colleagues. Colleagues, today we recognize Human Trafficking Awareness Month here in the city of Los Angeles. Pimps target, pimps target young women from some of our poorest neighborhoods and manipulate them into thinking that their only worth is their ability to make them money. In my district, we see young girls being trafficked every day. In fact, the average age of entrance into prostitution is between the ages of 12 and 14 years of age. Over 50% of trafficked women in this country are runaway youth. To help save some of these girls from being victimized and continue to be victims, we've created a Valley Bureau Human Trafficking Task Force, focusing on the Sepulveda and Lancashire corridors in the San Fernando Valley. In the valley, in the valley, we have begun to target gang members and the criminal enterprise behind pimping out some of these girls. We've also targeted Johns, letting them know that our girls are not for sale. One of our partners is Journey Out. This group helps the victims of human trafficking. Journey Out provides women with resources. Journey Out was created in 1980 to provide a safe place to discuss all issues related to living a life of abuse, violence, and poverty. Journey Out also focuses on a common challenge and ways to move forward from the experiences that they've lived and thrive. Journey Out offers many services that include case management, referrals, survivor mentorship, peer-to-peer support and counseling, individual and crisis counseling, GED tutoring, HIV testing and education, medical vocation services, and other basic needs like food, clothes, and hygiene products. and hygiene products. Today, we have a board member, a board member from Journey Out, Erickson Albrecht, and executive director Dr. Stephanie Powell, representing their wonderful organization. And I'd like to introduce Stephanie to say a few words. She's an incredible executive director and I'm very proud to call her my friend. She has spent 30 years with LAPD as a retired, and she retired as a vice sergeant in October of 2013. Dr. Powell uses her considerable skills and insight to educate the community about the complex and often misunderstood world of sex trafficking and creates a positive change in the victims that she serves. Members, please help me welcome Dr. Stephanie Powell from the Journeys Out Executive Director.
Doctor, welcome.
Thank you very much and good morning. From doing my 30 years with the Los Angeles Police Department and running a vice unit in the valley, it was then that I noticed that it was not an issue that needed to be arrested away, that resources were needed. So interesting enough, the organization that I now lead, I actually used as a resource. Two programs or three programs that were not mentioned today that I would like to mention is the fact that we have an empowerment group. We also have a diversion program and that diversion program is sanctioned by the city attorney's office. When a woman is arrested, she will go through our diversion program and once it's completed, that particular case is now, will be dismissed. Also, we have a good working relationship with the Los Angeles Police Department in which we actually go out on task forces with them to be, to be able to provide immediate services. We also do this with Long Beach PD as well as Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. I have to say that I am so proud of law enforcement in terms of their victim-centered approach to this issue. With the toiletries that we are going to receive, we're going to use those in our drop-in center as well as when our clients come in and we're doing intake for the first time. Many of our clients are actually homeless. They have no permanent address because they're going from motel to motel. The pimps don't allow them to, or the pimps control their behavior in terms of their eating as well as sleeping. And so as a result, that is why we have our drop-in center. It is our hope too, that we will be able to open a drop-in center in South Central LA where it is much needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all the great that you, the work that you do, Dr. Powell. Colleagues, in recognition of Human Trafficking Awareness Month, my office will be collecting toiletries. Things as shampoo and soap, toothbrushes and toothpaste, feminine products, deodorant, et cetera, are all welcome. This is to help the women that Journey Out assist. Please bring all the items to one of the boxes that will be located throughout City Hall and in my office as well. Gentlemen, I'm asking each and one of you to please contribute to this drive and donate as many items as you can so that Journey Out can put them to good use by helping other women and victims of human trafficking. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to present Journey Out with its recognition for their outstanding work in helping victims rebuild their lives. Thank you very much for the wonderful work that you do.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Martinez, first of all, I want to get, doctor, really want to thank you for all that you've done. And to Ms. Martinez, you have really helped this council make this a very important issue. And I'm glad that, that it's starting to get the kind of recognition that it deserves because there's so many people that don't really consider this a problem. When they think of prostitution, they don't, do not think about somebody's 12-year-old daughter. And, and I think that you've led the charge and that's why this council stands behind you. I will definitely participate. I'm going to challenge everybody on this council to come up with as many of the items that you requested. You should give us all a note or email that lists them again and we'll get, if we can get Busciano ginned up, there's no telling how much stuff we can collect. And with that said, before you present the award, let me just say again, thank you. This is a critical issue. You've also helped us with our partnership with the county and you should definitely be recognized for this.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
And doctor, we thank you, 30 years of service and, and this is a very important issue. With that said, Mr. Harris Dawson wanted to say a word.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members. I just want to stand and applaud you, Dr. Powell, and thank our colleague, Councilmember Martinez for being a leader on this issue, not just in the valley in her district, but before I was on the city council, I actually marched with Councilwoman Martinez on Western Boulevard, a street in my district that we need to take back and send the message that our children are not for sale. We've had a lot of talk about homelessness this past week as the city's released a report. One of the many things that gets overlooked often is that one in eight homeless people are minors. And of those that are minors, estimate, estimates say that about one in three of them, within two weeks of being on the street, within two weeks of being on the street, one in three girls are, begin to be trafficked. And it's a long time before they get out of that. And what doesn't get talked about is if there are not intervention, interventions, young people start getting trafficked at 12 and by 19 or 20, they're dead or very, very, very sick. And so we applaud your efforts, we want to get behind you 100%. Council District 8 will be there with as much as we possibly can. And we also want to be there and offer our support in getting a drop-in center in South LA as soon as we possibly can. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
As Ms. Martinez and the doctor are leaving the center aisle, if I could now defer to Mr. Sadio for your presentation.
Mr. President, while Mr. Sadio is coming, there's a request to continue item two to tomorrow, January 13th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. And quickly, don't we have a vote we could do?
Yes, Mr. President, there's being to reconsider item four, the ordinance, now that there are 15 members.
Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Sadio.
Right, Mr. President.
Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, thank you. About, I don't know, 10 weeks ago, we were involved in one of our cleanups and I had the privilege of meeting a remarkable group. You can look at them on YouTube. It's a group called the Sunburst Youth Challenge Academy. And they are sponsored by the Manasseh Corporation and a Chance for Children. And they are one of the most incredible groups working with at-risk youth that you will find anywhere in this nation. As you know, Mr. President, the challenges that face young men and women in our society, we were talking about that just a second ago. And we were talking about how difficult it is for many of them when they are growing up environments where they have to engage and confront gang youth. And many of them sometimes fall into some of the behaviors of those gang youth. This doesn't necessarily mean that we should discard them. This doesn't mean that they're going to live a life of gang activity, but they are challenged at those moments. And this program is special in that it is self-selected. The mission of the program is to reclaim the lives of youth, at-risk youth, who have fallen behind in their high school credits and who voluntarily, out of their own volition, out of their own will, out of their own commitment, decide that they want to change their lives. We have all seen this type of redemptive behavior in our lives. We are products of that behavior. And so the academy is a five and a half long, five and a half month-long residential, live-in, military-style academy. And from there, they get a year of high school credits. They develop their leadership, their cooperative skills, their academic skills, and most importantly, you'll see an incredible growth in their self-esteem, pride, and confidence. These young men and women have chosen to do this, to change their lives around. And I just can't tell you how excited I am about what the prospects are for these young men and women. They work with the National Guard and with the LAPD. And in a minute, I'm going to ask them to do their chant because that's what really overwhelmed them. They were, as I said, partners with the, are sponsored by the Manasseh Corporation and by a Chance for Children. So I want to ask Pam and Chris, are you here?
I'm here.
Pam, come on up. Nope. Okay, you know, give, tell, give me the order here because I'm, I'm off track. You know me, brother.
You'll get right back on, you're that good, Mr. Sadio.
I just started talking. No, here we go, I got an order here. So we're going to start, first let me introduce before we hear from the young men and women. That's not on the schedule, but I'm going to ask for it anyway. Let's hear from Lieutenant Colonel Joel Armstrong, Director of Sunburst Academy. Where are you? Come on up, Fred.
Mr. President, councilmembers, city staff, I want to thank you for the recognition today. Sunburst is part of the national program for the National Guard Youth Challenge Program. We are located, there's 36 programs nationwide within 27 states, one in Puerto Rico and Washington DC. The whole program operates off of taking individuals that are at risk or high school dropouts, providing them the resources needed so they become autonomous tax-paying citizens. Because we have within our nation, the urgency to get people educated, to become strategic leaders, the future leaders that we need throughout the nation. Moreover, we are able through our high school program, through the Department of Orange County, to give each and every one of our students, our cadets, the equivalency of a year's worth of credit in the five and a half months of residency that they're there. Then we move on a year afterwards and we track our graduates for a year through a mentorship program to see how they are tracking. We are the highest rated at, over 85% of our graduates continue to do what we've asked of them. They've either re-enrolled in school, they've earned their high school diploma, or they've attained a job. So our program does work. Moreover, I want to thank the leadership of the Los Angeles Police Department through the leadership of Chief Villegos, Commander Arcos, and where the rubber meets the road, Sergeant Adam Moore. And what they have done is absolutely amazing. They are bringing back the police department into the communities. We are giving back. We are letting our cadets realize that the organization is larger than themselves by interacting with their communities and with the Los Angeles Police Department. So, Mr. President and councilmembers, again, I thank you very much. This is a very much an honor that will be much appreciated for many years. Thank you so much.
Okay, Pam, come on up.
Thank you so much. Well, we love Sunburst Youth Academy and working with LAPD has been great. Manasseh, Chris can't be here today, he has to work so I can go play with LAPD and Sunburst. But we really thank Councilman Busciano, we thank Commander Arcos, Commander Tingeridis, who's back here, who really got us started in all this. We're so honored and blessed to work with everybody at LAPD in all we do and also thank Chief Villegos, who's been amazing. So we'd love to invite you down, Councilman Busciano, I've been trying to get you down there for a tour for a while. You went without me? Okay. Anyway, thank you so much.
Next, Ty Collins, a Chance for Children.
Hey, Collins. I founded a Chance for Children almost 25 years ago. I started working in Boyle Heights with a homeless shelter there and that inspired me to start a foundation. I've since been working all over the city with homeless inner-city kids, partnered with the LAPD for over 20 years and am honored to be a board member and part of Sunburst, sponsoring the kids for Sunburst Youth Academy. Our big motto is to see kids through from kindergarten to college. And we're now on our third generation of kids out of LA that it's just remarkable, this is success stories. But statistics prove and everyone always says to us, if you don't get them by the time they're 14, 15, it's too late. And the thing that has most impressed me with Sunburst is that they are proving, you get these kids 15, 16, it's not too late, it's never too late. These kids are amazing, they just need someone to believe in them and they need a direction. So I'm just really honored to be a part of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Justine Makeoff?
Thank you. Justine Makeoff. I just want to say, this program works. I encourage everybody here, I know Karen Price has been out on the streets with these kids, many of you know what they already do, please, 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 go take a tour because it will change your life and they can change your neighborhood. These kids come out and they show by example what kids in your neighborhood need to see to become successful. They prove by example. Please, I implore you, go take a tour, it will change your life.
Chief Villegos.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio, city councilmembers. It's a true honor and a privilege to be here today because I get an opportunity to recognize what I believe to be one of the most successful at-risk youth programs there is nationwide. I've taken a tour of the facility, I've watched the graduation, I've had many discussions with the students, the cadets. I've received letters of encouragement, letters of, you know, their pledging success and their desire to succeed in life and statements indicating that had it not been for the Sunburst Academy, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be alive in many cases. Many of these students, these youthful kids were predelinquent and in some cases were delinquent. Drug offenders, et cetera, and they didn't have the opportunity to succeed. All of us know that nothing stops violence better than a job, nothing stops violence better than an education. And what the Sunburst Academy does is it provides them with life skills and it provides them with self-esteem, self-worth. It also provides them with an opportunity to have hope and nothing could be better than having hope. And so our partnership, the collaboration and the relationship that we have with the Sunburst Youth Academy is something that I'm truly proud of. I'm proud of the work that's done by Colonel Armstrong and the National Guard, all of the, all of the people in the National Guard. It's a, it's an assignment that they volunteer for, it's a labor of love for them, it's something that they truly want to do because of the kids and the improvement. I'm also very proud of our relationship, our partnership with Justine Makeoff, Pam Givens, Tay Collins. They are truly remarkable community members that give of themselves for the community. Everything they do, from fundraising to partnerships to sponsoring, is specifically to help our youth. And they're not only involved in this program, they're involved in other programs with the Los Angeles Police Department. And lastly, I'd like to say, the most important component of this is the students, the cadets. They could have easily given up, but they didn't. They continuously try and strive to succeed and their success is predicated upon our belief in them. And as long as we continue to believe in them and inspire and challenge them, they will succeed for all of us. So I'm thankful to be here and I'm very, very thankful for our partnership.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Sadio, we do have a couple speakers on the queue, but I think you've got something you're planning.
You know, these guys do this incredible riff, but they're all here from different platoons, so they're not, they're not ready for it. But I will tell you, I love these young, young men and women and they are future leaders of our community. I'm very excited for their, for their future. But, I will tell you, I love these young men and women, and they are future leaders of our community. I'm very excited for their future. Once you see them out there, and they are just, it's hard to find people so enthusiastic about volunteering, cleaning up a neighborhood, doing the work that they do, but yet, when you see these young men and women, future leaders of our community, you just fall in love with them. And so, with that, I just want to thank all of you, young men and women, for that. You wanna do one of your, who guys, or one of your Sunburst? You wanna do Sunburst on three, or?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay. One, two, three.
Sunburst!
There you go. Anyway, you've heard the voice of the future.
That's right.
Thank you so much, council members, for your attention.
We do have a couple of members on the queue that wish to speak as well. Before I turn it over to them, let me just say something to all of you involved in Sunburst and Councilmember Sadio for doing this. Making a difference in a young person's life is so impactful, and so dramatic, and so rewarding, not only perhaps for yourselves, but for them. The numbers, in fact, just came out this morning, it's $65,000 a year for incarceration for each individual that's put into our system. And when you think about turning one person's life around, not just economically, emotionally, what it does for a community, what it does for a family, the opportunity, it's not the primary responsibility, the first responsibility of law enforcement to effectuate an arrest, it's to prevent the crime from happening in the first place. And beyond what you're doing, beyond preventing a crime from happening and creating more victims, is you're giving a hand up. You're helping people, young people, to not only achieve their dreams, but have dreams in the first place they otherwise probably wouldn't have ever even imagined. It's living beyond their dreams. And so, I thank all of you for giving so many this opportunity. We have a very similar program in my district as well, that I'm really proud of. And when you see firsthand the effort that you put in, the little effort that it takes to turn a life around, and you see what the opportunity, potential that has, it's a ripple effect on so many lives. So, thank you for that. And with that, we have a number of members on the queue. Start off with Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, cadets from Sunburst Academy. Thank you, Mr. Sadio, for this presentation. I had the great blessing of having Sunburst Academy come to my district in August, and I spent a whole day with you all, and it was really a revelation. And if anyone needs to see how one person's life can be transformed through public service, and how, through public service, you can transcend all difficulties that you've been dealt with in life, the challenges, then Sunburst Academy is the organization to learn all about. And the resources, and the improvements, and the inspiration you brought to my district on that day has had a lasting effect. And I want to thank you all, especially the cadets and the organization, Sunburst Academy. It's a wonderful organization that is transforming lives through service. And that's the greatest gift that you can give Angelenos, and you're also transforming our neighborhoods for the better. When we had that particular day of service, constituents were coming out and thanking you, as they should, because they are reaping the direct benefits of your work and your volunteerism. It feels pretty good, doesn't it, to help transform a neighborhood? It helps with our own self-value and our own self-worth, and that's the lesson here. I also want to thank Olympic Division, and Captain Palazzolo, and Captain Malachi, and Sergeant Adam Moore, who has taken a leadership role in this, and all of the great individuals with Olympic Division who helped make this happen. And your model and your partnership with Sunburst Academy is an example for the rest of the city. And I just can't say enough good things about what you do, and I look very forward to touring the Sunburst Academy site. And just know that you have a new fan and supporter in me, and anything that my office or I can do, we're gonna be there for you. We're counting on you, you're our future, and we're gonna support you all of the way. So, congratulations, and may God bless you and your families. Thank you.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually wanted to thank Gil Rissford for bringing this outstanding organization to the council today. Sunburst, they do such a tremendous job. We had the pleasure of benefiting on a number of occasions in the 9th District. And I would just differ slightly with my colleagues, I don't think you're future leaders, I think you're current leaders. You're leading by example, and really demonstrating how you can change your life and change the communities. And, you know, it is quite a scene to see, you know, you marching 25 or 30 deep, 10 across, coming down the street before cleanup activity begins. It's a real indication of the growth and development of you individually, and it does excite the community. It encourages, it inspires, and certainly, it lets people know about a wonderful program that exists, and young people who are taking advantage of it to change their lives. So, I just want to thank, not only the youth who are involved, but the adults who have a real unique role to play, in and out of uniform, in making sure that our young people know that we do care about them, and that we do provide opportunities for them to grow, and opportunities to serve our community. Keep up the good work, you are leaders today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Busciano.
Thank you, Mr. President. At an opportunity as a senior lead to make numerous referrals to Sunburst, it's a program that works, it works well, you measure its effectiveness, and it's a successful program. Then Officer Adam Moore, who's here with us, when I was elected, told me you got to go out and visit and tour the site, which I did. And it was an incredible opportunity for me to see firsthand the impact that Sunburst had on the kids it serves. And we turn back on how we can to impact lives and to save lives, and we know for sure that Sunburst is doing just that. It's doing both. It's saving lives in a time where, this last year in 2015, we saw a spike in homicides. Many of those homicides were impacted by gang crime, by gang homicides. And just to let you know that, you know, you are saving lives, and we want to appreciate that. And our Southeast team really has had an impact, and the officers that are serving in Southeast have made numerous recommendations and referrals. And then Captain Tengritis, who's here with us, Commander Tengritis, thank you for leadership and supporting the program. And nowhere in this country are you gonna find a relationship between the police department and our teams than here in Los Angeles. And we want to recognize the officers, the mentors, our military staff for embracing these kids, loving them, and showing them that they are loved, to begin with. And we appreciate our folks who are here today, the teams who have been successful, and we are here to continue to support you. So, thank you, Gil, for making this presentation, and Chief Viegos for continued support, and all the command staff from the police department here to support the program. God bless you, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank the Estamo member Gil Sadio for bringing a great presentation this morning. I want to echo the comments of Councilmembers Price and Busciano. You all are already leaders in your community today. We had, just a few weeks ago, a cleanup on Western Avenue. I remember some of you all from there. We chatted up and down that street, we walked those streets, and not only did we clean the streets, but people, young people that are standing in their yards, or standing on the corner, or walking to the park, they saw you. And they saw what they could become in you. And so, I want to thank you for not just the work that you do, but the example that you're setting for your peers all throughout the city of Los Angeles. Thank you all so much.
I have one special request that I'd like to make as well, since we have some of our leaders amongst us, Mr. Sadio, if we could hear from just one of them, it would be great just to hear sort of what led them to the program, or what they've gotten out of it, and share with us some of their experience. And we're gonna be all eyes and ears as one of you step up, so we can hear about how this has made a dramatic impact, perhaps, not only on your life, but what it could do for many others. And introduce yourself as well.
I am graduate Chavez from Sunburst Youth Academy. And what led me to Sunburst was my laziness, and I didn't want that for me anymore. I wanted to be productive. And I saw how much it hurt my mom, and it hurt my family, to see me not becoming what I was supposed to be, my full potential. And it made me want to be more than myself, be something more for my family. And so, I went into Sunburst, not liking it a lot, but I pushed through it to become what my family wanted me to become. And it can change a lot of people's lives. It definitely changed mine.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you.
Everybody get close.
All right, let's give them all another round of applause. Sunburst.
All right, we're gonna go to the back?
We have one called "Special for Cards." The first one is Jacob Fritschmuth.
And, Mr. President, while he's coming, there's a request to continue items one H and K to January 26, and one O and A W to February 12.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection. Thank you very much.
My name is Jacob Fritschmuth, and I'm the owner of the property on 2930 Tyburn Street, LA. And I understand, this is my primary residence, and it is my understanding that the city will not lien owner-occupied homes. That is what all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think staff will speak to that. We'll just set that one aside for one second. Okay, the next card is for Danielle Shenkey. No longer here. That was the address at 415 North Crescent Heights Boulevard. Okay. The next card, then, is Tony Curris, Dubinsky Family Trust.
And while she's coming, Mr. President, there's a request to continue items one V and X to February 12.
Okay, then we'll continue those, and that'll be the order without objection. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as long as we're doing that, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that item one W and one A D each be continued for two weeks as well.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you.
And that's January 26.
January 26, Councilmember Kokorian. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Tony, I'm here for the Dubinsky Family Trust, and I spoke with the inspector, and he suggested I ask for an additional two-week continuance, as we've gone over some extra information.
That's one A D.
No, I provided it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue that for two weeks.
Thank you so much.
No problem, without objection, that'll be the order on that one.
And that's January 26.
And on Danielle Shenkey, on the one Z A A, we'll go ahead and continue that two weeks as well. On, I'm sorry, one A A.
And that's January 26.
Okay, and the next speaker is Nalinda Lopez. That's one Z. Good morning.
Good morning. I just want to make sure that it is in the system, that it's been paid for already, and that I don't have to be back.
Yes, item one Z has been received and filed, and as much as the lien has been paid.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And Donna? Followed by Patricia, followed by Eric.
How quickly you postponed those, all those liens until February, postponed but not waived, those, I guess some were paid, you know. The immense numbers of liens, even with ones that were postponed, are huge and ridiculous. Look at all those people who are affected. Remember, each one has men, women, and children who are affected. So, for this new year, be generous. How about the New Year's resolution? I guess it won't be fair to waive the entire fee, but make it something that each person can afford to pay in payments. First of all, getting rid of the late fees, for a starter. People shouldn't have the late fees to go in their way. So, I'm not sure exactly why all these people have all these liens, but it, and I realize you were gone for a couple of weeks, and that's why they piled up, and you're just postponing the inevitable. Soon or later, they have to pay, and you have to come up with an answer.
Good morning, Happy New Year to everyone. I counted 58 homes that have liens on them. We need these people to be notified by mail, by phone, by text, and by email. Most of these people know nothing about these liens. I think it's just a communistic way of getting more and more property from people. Some of you have property for grandchildren that aren't even born yet. Now, I'm looking at something that's really ridiculous here, you've got almost 60, you're taking about 50,000 homes a year. And I say "take" because these liens make it almost impossible for people to sell their homes. You've got a lien here at 5300 South 11th Avenue for $932.40. If that person can't pay that $900, bring them in here and give them a waiver. We've got enough people on the street, we don't need any more people on the street. Tents are everywhere, and I'm telling everybody I know, worldwide, what's going on in Los Angeles. Tourists are asking me, what's happening here? They see tents and people homeless, black people on the corner begging, and these Negroes, Harris-Dawson, especially.
Okay, you're not on subject, and you please do not address any particular member, stay on the subject matter, ma'am.
...street, $742.44. If that person can't pay that $700, bring them in here and give them a waiver. We don't need to be throwing people on the street. This is not a communist society. You Democrats are nothing but communists. President Trump for president of this station.
You're not on subject, you're off-subject once again. Thank you very much.
Yes, it's Eric Preven, a resident from the 2nd District. Welcome back, City Council. This is an unusually structured meeting, but the item one, of which there were 48 or 50 people called down to settle their liens, has not been heard until now, is a very odd protocol, because many of them have already left, so I'm not sure where we're going with that. One out in Blooming Fields District, and he's doing a fantastic job at growing things out there, is on Shirley Avenue, it's 5353. This is a retaining wall issue, they paid $140, settled it all up, and then they get a bill for $3,000 bucks. So, I feel sorry for them, frankly. And the poor person's down here, she's like, I dealt with these people, I went to the court, you know, I mean, you can never quite tell, but it is embarrassing. And it's on, it's up and down the ladder, sir. So, if I were you, and I know you're looking for things to do that engender public trust, you might consider invoking some kind of a clemency program, along with Mr. Weezer, who loves clemency, because it's time. It's time to remove this. Because it's time. It's time to remove this process from the beginning of our stately meeting and put it where it belongs, in a kind of a clerk space where we can settle these things out. If there's a, if there's a need to take somebody to court, certainly Kokorian knows how to do that and then settle them out in the court setting. But we do have to address this because it's embarrassing, and it's denigrating the public's meeting. Ask Sadio once he gets back from wherever he is. I know he's here somewhere. He's a very good man. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And then on one A I, we have an amount reduction. It's gonna be from 396729 to 1,75229. Having no other cards, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the remaining items on number one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go ahead and go on to general public comment. Patricia? Did you wish to speak?
Speak up. I can't hear you.
General public comment. Did you wish to speak?
Speak up. Listen here. What happened in the meeting this morning? You rammed everything through. I was a little bit late this morning, came in 20 minutes late, was told everything was rammed through. You're bringing in these frivolous committees, taking up time. We've got people laying on the street homeless. This city looks like a dump, and this city council is doing nothing, and you're a Democratic city council. We need a Republican city council. I wasn't born a Democrat, and I'll never vote Democratic again in my life. You're bringing animals up here, in here, giving animals homes. But we've got people laying in Skid Row, my people, black people, laying in Skid Row and eating Negroes on the city council. Wesson, yes, doing nothing. And we're gonna vote you Negroes out of office. The only one that's trying to do something is Price. And O'Farrell, get me off of your email list. I don't know you, and I don't want you, I don't want to be on your email list. Take my name off. Thank you.
Likewise. Nice. Okay. And with that, Henry?
If you can't pay attention, you can't pay your bills. Ongoing MOU-defined deductions and union trust statements account for each hour. City, county, and hack officials failed to provide workers the prevailing sum due for an albergung service in L.A. In addition, accounts for every hour. City, county, and hack officials failed to make contributions to Lasers, Lacerre, and Calpurs for workers employed more than 1,000 hours in the course of a year. Consequently, you assholes who can't account for the time and money of others gotta make back payments to Calpurs, Lasers, and Lacerre, as shown in California Government Code 20283. So when y'all gonna learn how to legally work and serve the people of Los Angeles instead of having 186(c)(1) violations? Illegal transactions between public employers and public union officials.
Thank you. Mr. Previn?
Yes, it is Eric Previn from CD2, sir. Item number seven today was an interesting little nugget. If I'm not mistaken, it had to do with the moving around some money from the real estate trust funds of the districts. It's actually looking at a report. It's just looking at a report, sir, and moving it through Ms. Martinez's district very quickly. Unfortunately, the report was from October 2014, so the balances in those trust accounts do not meet with anything sensible and are just, it's some kind of cloud for something else. So let's get a good look at the current balances in the real estate trust reports from the districts. 684 is the one in CD2. And let's move forward into the new year with an open feeling so that the public could be visible at this city council meeting. Mr. Englander, you are one of the great leaders here. Please do so and ask your colleague, Mr. Wesson, and maybe Commander Martinez, if she wants to put herself in line to make the public visible. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, with that, that concludes general public comment. That, I believe, do we have any other items?
Special one motion has been circulated. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Over the council recess, a DWP water main break occurred in the 8500 block of Appian Way. The Bureau of Engineering cannot enter into the emergency contract to repair the main without a $1.2 million fund transfer from DWP. This could not occur during the recess. Immediate action is required to authorize the immediate transfer of funds. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, Mr. Ruh, are you gonna make, are you gonna speak on this? We'll just go ahead and open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, the findings are there. We now have the item before us.
Mr. Ruh, obviously forthwith, please.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and vote on the item first. So we'll go ahead and vote on the item now, and we'll open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, then that item's approved. We'll send it forthwith without objection per Councilmember Ruh. That concludes the special, and I believe that concludes the council agenda. So do we have any announcements, colleagues?
Excuse me, Mr. President. There's a request to reconsider item one Q.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reconsider one Q. And we'll go ahead and open the roll on one Q. For reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
And there's a request to continue that now for two weeks.
And that's till January 26th.
Okay, till January 26th without objection. That'll be the order. Thank you very much. All right, with that, do we have items for posting and referral?
Yes, council has items for posting and referral.
Okay, we'll go ahead and post and refer those items. And does that clear the desk?
That clears the desk.
Clears the desk. All right. Do we have announcements? Any announcements? Announcements? Seeing none? Do we have adjourning motions? We do. So if we can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise. Starting on my right, we'll start with Councilmember Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. It's with great sadness that I ask us to adjourn in memory today of Jean Mills, the mother of my chief of staff, Paul Habib. She passed away just before the New Year. She was born on January 2nd, 1935, in London. And she was the only child to Albert and Anne Mills. And when she was only a few years old, World War II broke out, and she survived numerous bombings of London by taking cover in air raid shelters. Eventually, she was evacuated with her parents to live in the countryside for a number of years until the war was won, and she was able to return home in June of 1945. That time away during her formative years had a profound effect on the person she would become. She became an avid camper and outdoors woman. She learned to row boats and became an excellent swimmer and cyclist. She learned how to farm and garden and developed a great appreciation for animals and nature. Most of all, she learned how to be independent and to value hard work. She was a wonderfully giving person, and she adopted her first two children, Robert and Ralph, from an orphanage in England when they were just four and one years old. She eventually emigrated to Canada, where she gave birth to her third son, Paul Habib, before the family emigrated here to Los Angeles in New Year's Eve in 1978. She spent much of her life working two jobs to help raise her family. During the day, she taught English as a second language classes at Repetto and Granada Elementary Schools in Monterey Park. She was affectionately known by her students as Mrs. Happy because she was always smiling and positive and because they had difficulty pronouncing her last name of Habib. She loved the nickname and the students she helped. She eventually moved on to teach ESL at San Gabriel High School and often worked nights as a licensed vocational nurse at several convalescent homes in Los Angeles County in order to make ends meet for her family. She had a great passion for the outdoors, art, and culture, and she passed that down to her family. Even on a limited income, she found a way to expose her family to the numerous free cultural amenities our city and the Southern California region had to offer, from camping trips in surrounding mountains and regular beach excursions to visits to the great museums and botanical gardens of the area. She believed that life is not about the money you have to spend, but how you spend your time. And she spent a lifetime showing her children all the opportunities that this city and the country provided. After a long battle with Alzheimer's, she passed away on December 28th, 2015. She was filled with a zest for life, a love of animals, nature, and adventure, a resilient determination that saw her through the toughest times, a creative and artistic vision that always saw the bright side, and ultimately, a playful and joyful spirit that was infectious to anyone around her. They say the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, and anyone who knows my chief of staff, Paul Habib, knows that like his mother, he's a hard worker and a dedicated family man with a great personality and zest for life. I'm sure Jean was and is very proud of him. Jean Mills is survived by her three sons, Robert, Ralph, and Paul, and her six grandchildren, John, Katerina, Cambria, Anika, Nathan, and Franklin. She will truly be missed. May she rest in peace. And council president have one more. And colleagues, I also ask that we adjourn today in memory of Ian Lemmy Kilmister of Motorhead. As you recall, just this past August, we honored Lemmy along with his bandmates, Mickey D and Phil Campbell. And let me tell you, we heard back that Lemmy and the band were deeply touched to receive such an honor from the city of Los Angeles. So I'm really happy that we were able to do that in his last final days. And as Council President Wesson said that day, all of us council members were all suddenly cool by that association and presentation. And that's the way Lemmy related to his fans everywhere, whether they were politicians or truck drivers. He made them feel cool when he performed, and when he performed, he gave it his all, his heart and soul. When I first Lemmy, I told him I was a politician, and he instantly replied to me, "Be one of the good ones and watch out for the people." So although people saw him as a "I don't care" person, as an attitude of rock and roll, he really had a soft soul that cared deeply about other people. Just some of his background, he was, he passed away on December 28th after a short battle with an aggressive cancer that was diagnosed just on December 26th. This was two days after celebrating his 70th birthday. He died at home with his family. Lemmy, whose full name was Ian Fraser Kilmister, was born in Staffordshire, England, on December 24th, 1945. His musical career began in the early 1960s, and he was, for a time, a roadie for Jimi Hendrix. He played in several rock bands, including The Rockin' Vickers, Sam Gopal, and Hawkwind before founding Motorhead. Lemmy formed Motorhead in 1975. To date, Motorhead has released over 23 studio albums and achieved 30 million in sales worldwide. The band has recorded a number of albums here in Los Angeles that they now call home, including their latest record, Bad Magic, which was released in August of 2015 and which I think is one of their best ones to date. He made brilliant music while inspiring other musicians here in the city of Los Angeles and all over the world to play well, to play hard, and to honor their own interpretations of rock and roll. It's been mentioned that Metallica and Guns N' Roses say they would not exist if it wasn't for Lemmy. Lemmy's music and lifestyle was a distinctive part of the heavy metal genre. He stayed true to his vision and execution of incredibly mesmerizing and thundering feeling in your gut rock and roll. He was a general, is a general, and a rock and roll ringleader. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Koritz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn this meeting by remembering the late Mel Fuer, who recently died at age 92 and was the father of our friend and city attorney, Mike Fuer. I can truly say that Mel led an exemplary life dedicated to service, educating, and assisting others. His experience of living through the horrors of World War II that inspired him to pursue those directions. He was always an unwavering optimist, which he used to keep morale up by playing a worn-out violin in the POW camp, Stalag 17, that he was imprisoned in after being captured by the Nazis when they shot down his aircraft. He completed a very strenuous and deadly march across Austria, where he and his fellow prisoners were eventually liberated. And he received a number of medals for his service. During his difficult captivity, he vowed that if he survived, he would do the most important work for society that he could. And after the war, he went into education, where he was a teacher and an elementary school principal in San Bernardino for 36 years, where he earned deep respect from students and educators alike. He was also a leader in desegregation and the principal of one of California's first bilingual schools. He was an educational leader who truly cared deeply about every child. And for the last 24 years, he volunteered at the Maple Counseling Center, helping to instill positive values in students' lives. He spent his life doing what he pledged, and he also inspired his son, Mike, to lead a life of public service as well. Mel was a loving and dedicated family man and is survived by his wife Stella of 63 years, his three sons, Bob, Steve, and Mike. Through his tireless dedication to serving others, Mel Fuer has truly been a wondrous inspiration, and he'll be sorely missed by everyone whose lives he touched. If I could do a second adjournment. This is a week of loss in the rock and roll world, and so I'd like to acknowledge and adjourn memory of David Bowie, who was born David Jones and ironically intended a career as Davy Jones before Davy Jones of the Monkees came out and preceded him, in which case he decided he would change his name to Tom Jones as an act. That didn't work out either. And he wound up as David Bowie, much more appropriately so. He was a British-born pop-rock singer, songwriter, record producer, actor, cultural icon, who came to prominence in the late 60s and became a figure and trendsetter in the international music scene for more than four decades. He was known not only for his atmospheric complex songs, he was a chameleon who adopted various persona over the course of his career. As he changed his musical styles, costumes, and modes of presentation, he influenced countless artists while always remaining a consummate original. He was responsible for some of the greatest songs over several decades, including Space Oddity, Changes, Life on Mars, Suffragette City, All the Young Dudes, Gene Genie, Rebel Rebel, Golden Years, Fame, Young Americans, Heroes, Under Pressure, Les Dance, and Modern Love, among many others. His 25 albums, the last of which Black Star, was released just two days before his death, top charts in various parts of the world from 1970 through 2013. He was also known for his artistic collaborations with artists such as John Lennon, Queen, Brian Eno, Bing Crosby, Lou Reed, Marlena Dietrich, Mot the Hoopla, and others. He also distinguished himself as an actor in such films as The Man Who Fell to Earth, The Hunger, Cat People, and most recently, The Prestige. He also did an acclaimed turn on Broadway in The Elephant Man, and was one of the pioneers of adventurous music video. He's been called innovative, restless, visionary, and an ever-changing postmodernist who brought art to the pop party. He performed, lived, and worked, and recorded in Los Angeles at various times in his career, but spent most of his final years in New York. He died of cancer on Sunday, January 10th, and he is survived by his second wife, the model, Iman, his film director's son Duncan Jones, and his daughter Alexandria Jones.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember O'Farrell.
The world lost another musical great shortly after the New Year, and that is Miss Natalie Cole. And although we haven't drafted a proper adjourning motion for her, that was a great loss. A beautiful soul, a transcendent performer, who rose to fame 40 years ago with a breakthrough album and went on to win several Grammys. And as an Angelino, who was raised by her loving family, including Father Nat, King Cole. Natalie Cole was one of the musical greats and really helped transform jazz and several other genres during her incredible career. She will be missed. She had a very, very special life that burned bright for anyone who ever saw her in an interview or saw her. that burned bright. For anyone who ever saw her in an interview or saw her perform in concert, a very special individual, whose loss will be felt by millions. So, I just want to take this occasion and mention the lovely legacy of Miss Natalie Cole.
Councilmember Busta Yena?
Thank you. I'm asked to adjourn in memory of a lifelong San Pedrin. Katie Williams passed away last week, attended nearly all community events in San Pedro, well-loved. She didn't miss one Fisherman's Fiesta, and developed many lifelong relationships in San Pedro. She is survived by her son David Williams, her grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and numerous other family members and friends. She's also preceded in death by her parents, her husband Harold, her son Douglas, and her sister Luis. Funeral mass was held last Saturday at Mary's Star of the Sea Parish. May Katie Williams rest in peace. Thank you.
Seeing no other adjourning motions, that concludes this council meeting, and we are officially adjourned. Be safe. Thank you.